With the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dan, do we have a roll, please?
Certainly. Schmuckel?
Here.
Agostinelli?
Here.
Corn?
Here.
McCumber?
Here.
Uh, L. McManus?
Here.
And J. McManus?
Here.
And it's noted that lap is an excuse.
All right, thank you. Uh, first item on our agenda is public comment. This is the first of two. We have one at the beginning and one at the end of our meetings. So at this point, we'll open up public comment. If anybody has anything they'd like to say, come on up, state your name and address for the record, and let us know what you want to say.
Alan Lehman, 508-9 Case Court, Traverse City. I'm not speaking as a road commissioner here. I'm just speaking as a resident of Garfield Township. And I've, I've read about the mast upgrades that MDOT has proposed to you. And as a resident, I would think there's a much better use for $280,000. A traffic light is a traffic light, as far as I'm concerned. I remember last year when Commissioner Agostinelli talked to me about the paints coming off the one at Frankie Road and Silver Lake Road, the, the, the more sophisticated, the more, the fancier posts and arms, I think are more maintenance. Um, I, I, there's got to be some alter, alter mode transportation that could use that, infill in sidewalks where the, where, where we're missing, areas where people have to walk out into the road. There's so many things I would prioritize. Let them put up their new traffic lights. They'll be fine hanging from the wires, just like they are at South Airport Road and 31. They're just fine. And use that money to, on a project that is, will benefit a lot more residents that don't have any other way for projects to get funded. If, if they're really necessary, which they're not, MDOT has a funding mechanism to afford that. They don't need the township pitching in. And I, I think they're more, they're, they're very expensive, and I, I really would encourage you, when you, we'll come to that, to, uh, to not spend the township money on those fancy mast arms. Thank you.
Thanks, Al. Anybody else? Seeing nobody else coming forward, we'll go ahead and close public comment and move on to review and approval of the agenda. And if anybody has any conflicts of interest, now would be the time to, to state those.
I make a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll second that motion.
Motion made, supported to approve the agenda as presented. Any further discussion on that? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Consent calendar.
The purpose of the consent calendar is to expedite business by grouping non-controversial items together to be dealt with in one board motion without discussion. Any member of the board, staff, or the public may ask that any item on the consent calendar be removed therewith and placed elsewhere on the agenda for full discussion. Such requests will be automatically respected. If any item is not removed from the consent calendar, the action noted in parentheses on the agenda is approved by a single board action adopting the consent calendar. This evening, you have minutes from April 8th, 2025, recommend approval. Bills from the general fund, $62,292.57, recommend approval. Gordy Frazier, developers, escrow funds, stormwater reviews, utility plan review, oversight, and closeout, $10,207.75. General utilities, $410. General, $1,435. And park funds, DNR Trust Fund, $25,436.46, for a total of $37,489.21, recommend approval. And that's it.
All right, thank you. Are there any items that the board, anybody on the board would like to have removed and placed elsewhere on the agenda? Any items staff would like to have removed and placed elsewhere? Any items, anybody in the public would like to have removed and placed elsewhere on the agenda? If not, are there entertaining motion?
I would like to make a motion to approve the consent calendar as presented and read.
Support.
Motion made, supported to approve the consent calendar as read. Dan, do we have a roll on that, please?
Corn? Corn?
Yes.
Agostinelli?
Yes.
Schmuckel?
Yes.
L. McManus?
Yes.
And McCumber?
Yes.
J. McManus?
Yes, thank you. All right, correspondence. Uh, I don't know if you need a thought. There's a letter from the watershed center regarding the local coal tar sealants in your packet, I believe. So, any questions about that or comments? Hearing done, we'll move on to reports. We'll start with the county commissioners' reports.
Lauren Flynn, County Commissioner, District 2. I have Fern Spence in the audience with me, District 4. Um, it's been a little while. We've all been traveling, spring break. Everybody have fun. Good Easter. Um, we are continuing with opioid settlement strategy. The board, uh, or the ad hoc committee is having a meeting on May 6th to continue that reviewing of cannabis and opioid dollars to get that out into the community as fast as possible. Um, the board also approved a resolution on April 2nd to begin planning, um, for construction of a new county jail. This is going to be a long process. It's not going to happen overnight. And we are going to want the, every voice we possibly can, so they'll be, uh, pay attention and be aware of what, um, committees we're putting together, steering committees we're doing with that. I know that will be a large group of people in, who value the importance of the movement towards a new jail. Um, District Court, the 86th District Court, Antrim County, has persisted with, uh, the withdrawal from the 86th District Court. Um, we have, the board approved, moving forward with, with a resolution of support for this. Um, Camp Graylick, we did, were presented with a business plan from John Chase, our parks director and facilities manager. Um, as it was approved by the Parks and Rec Commission. It was a good idea. It was great. We, we approved it. Um, unfortunately, now with AmeriCorps being defunded, that was going to be about, I think, 250 man-hours, somewhere around there. And six figures of, um, funds going towards salaries that we are no longer going to be receiving. So that is, might, it's going to see how we can get through that summer with, um, getting the park open on time that we want to, for the public. Um, an ad hoc committee was created to standardize the review of all the pilots and TIFs and brownfield proposals that are coming through. And fi- not finally, finally, but last big thing was that we revised ethics policy, and we adopted it on April 16th. And that provides clearer standards for public service conduct and conflicts of interest. So, that took a little while. Um, we do have study session tomorrow, um, public hearing for, um, not sewer, septic code. Yeah. And we will also be reviewing, what do you want to throw in?
No, go ahead. I just felt, like, if I need to reinforce anything, I should be at the podium right now.
And, uh, we'll be reviewing, um, Project Alpha as well as, um, the FMP. So hopefully we'll have some updates on what's going to happen on La Fray and Your Road over there. And my last thing is that we have coffee with the county on April 29th at the Senior Center. And then there's a grand opening on April 30th as well.
Yeah, thank you. Fern Spence, District 4, County Commissioner. Um, I just want to add, wanted to reinforce the open house on the 30th of April at the Senior Center. It starts at 2:00 PM. Um, it's a ribbon cutting as well. Um, and then they're looking for feedback from anyone in the community, like, all and everyone on that facilities master plan that Lauren just, or Commissioner Flynn just, uh, shared with you regarding the jail, the government center, and the store courthouse. Um, if the new jail is a priority, then we're going to need, um, to address the mechanical infrastructure of the government center because the boiler serves the jail and all the other parts of that government center building. I think that was it. Um, I've also been appointed to serve on the Traverse Transportation Coordinating Initiative Policy Board as a, um, one of the members. So I will be, um, able to have a better feel for what's going on with our coordination of our transportation infrastructure, um, now that we're a metropolitan planning organization. Happy to be a part of that.
And as always, we have, we can answer any questions for you.
Any questions?
Do you know if Wayne Schmidt is invited to the party on the 30th? Because he wasn't invited to the ribbon cutting, even though he's-
It was posted. I think it's a, it's publicly-
I don't know.
I saw it on, uh, Facebook, on their Facebook page. It looks like it's open to everybody.
He's instrumental in getting the funds for the-
He sure is. I'm sure that either myself or administration will reach out.
Okay.
And you know how to reach us on the, our website, or our phone numbers and emails are right on there. I speak really fast, sorry.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just hear my mother's voice in the head.
Slow down.
All right, Grand Traverse Rowdy, Grand Traverse Rowdy, yeah. Grand Traverse County Road Commission report.
Grand Traverse Rowdy?
Yeah, mixing words.
Good evening, Dan Watkins, uh, Road Commission Manager. Got just a few updates here. A big one for us, we had a really long winter. It's kind of back to almost like a, a normal winter for us, but it really pushed crews and our, our equipment. But everything came out the other side in good shape, good condition. We ordered enough salt, enough sand, enough blades. It's always an important thing. We got through, and actually have a little bit left. So we're in pretty good shape to start ordering. Believe it or not, we already ordered next year's salt. You have to put your order in by, uh, the end of April. So we're already going for next year on that. Uh, but luckily the spring coming, we were able to lift the frost laws, which we were waiting for there for a little while. And our shop was really prepared. They had all of our summer equipment ready, uh, our high ridging, our trailers, our tractors, our mowers. We were ready to go. So those frost laws came off and we hit the ground running. So right now, we're out doing a lot of, of high ridging removals, what we're doing. And that's where we're, the pavement asphalt comes right down to the road, and they get that grass build up, and traps that water and gets the water back underneath the road. We're trying to go out and really hit that hard and get that water off the road and save our roads. So, so much to, to repave a new road. We're, we're doing everything we can do to try to save what we have for an infrastructure. A lot of our bids came back already this year. So our chip seal bid came back in, and actually came in a little underpriced, so that was nice to see. And we're doing about 70 miles this year. We did 70 miles last year. And that's, again, just trying to save what we have for infrastructure. Our wedging bid, long line, painting, gravels, brine, that's going really well. Again, we've been switching that new brine, so they won the bid again this year. Guard rails, a couple of things we got lined up here coming in May, our sweeper, we're going to go through when we sweep our, all the curb and gutter. So you'll see us come out here in the beginning of May. We used to try to do it in April, but the last few years, we get a couple of last known storms, we're already out sweeping, so we're fighting ourselves. So we switched that to May this year. Right after that, it's done, we wind up a back truck, and you'll see us out doing all the manhole covers and taking care of all those issues. So, um, crack seal, we actually started doing crack seal this week. You'll see them right now on the, uh, southern part of the county. They'll be working their way this way with the crack seal. So, uh, another bid that we've got out, and actually talking to my board here tomorrow about it, is we put a bid out for car counts. That's the next step, we think, in looking at our overall management of the road system. So we did the trans maps, where we went and measured all the roads, the distances, the lengths, all the cracks, everything we have for an issue for them. We did a paver rating, which that's in-house, you drive the road, you rate the road. I think the next important step in that is we need to look at how many cars are going down each road. Once we put all this information together, I think we can really put a five-year plan together. And it'd be nice to actually have a five-year plan of where we're going, what roads we're going to repair, and everybody will have an idea what we're up to. Couple of projects that are coming up pretty close here would be Cass Road. And that's actually our first MPO project that we're going to be working on this year. Um, everything's done on Grand Traverse's side. We submitted that to MDOT. That's actually who the, the funding's going through, through MPO. They're kind of holding us up. They're ripping everything apart. They're, our engineers get accused over building stuff. They're kind of delaying us a little bit. So we're hoping they get done with their portion of it, and we can get that out to bid soon. If not, uh, this, it's a two-part project. So the MPO is going to give us funding in '27, I think it would be, for that. Next year's supposed to go to Leland. It rotates around. Leland is talking about that they're not going to be able to meet their needs for their project. They're asking if Grand Traverse could use that funding. And what we're thinking is that maybe we could do that in Cass in one shot, even if we didn't get it in this year. It might actually save us a little money because it'd be bidding up that whole section. So, uh, we've got a, uh, MPO meeting, actually, this week. So I think that's going to be a, a discussion coming up, from what I hear from Leland County, asking us if we can do it. We think we can. The big thing for us is just going to get that pushed out and get that second half designed. So. The other one was, uh, Tomline project. I know we, uh, came to you before and talked about that, looking at, we're trying to partner up with everybody, the airport, uh, the county, you know, both townships. And that project just came in way too much. It came in at like $1.7 million. Um, we were-
Wow.
Yeah, it was, it was pretty wild. That road definitely needs some help and do some repair. So what we're going to do is, we're going to do kind of a, a simpler repair. We're not going to crush the road and take it all out. We're going to do what's called the wedge. And we're going to try to bring shape back to that road. And then we're going to come over, and we're going to do a double chip seal. It's not the ultimate fix. It's not a brand-new road, but it's something that underneath our funds, we think we can take care of without, you know, trying to involve everybody else. And, you know, hopefully we can buy a good five years plus out of that road. The one thing with building the road like that, that I was actually going to ask the board tonight for some help, is put a weight restriction on that road. If you, we build the road nice, and you start having semi trucks come down there, it's not going to last, and it's not going to hold up. Especially if we build it nice, and you have maybe fuel trucks or something like that. Trying to cut across, go to Costco, they're going to destroy that road really fast on us. So it would be fine for everyday traffic. We're just going to try to ask if both townships, because it's a, you know, a township divider road, both, you know, put a letter of support saying that they would like the road commission to be okay with making that weight-restricted road. We could do that. So, um, so when we did that, that, that actually freed up a decent amount of funds, which brings me to the next one, would be Potter Road. Potter Road, at the end of the last year, you know, before we came into winter, yes, the road needed some work. I have never seen a road come apart like that one did over the winter. We really had that frost thaw heave really took Potter Road out, and it was in really bad shape. It's in really bad shape right now. We've been putting crushed concrete in, trying to fill in the potholes, and kind of keep it so it's a drivable surface. Again, I kind of mentioned we're having a board meeting this week. I'm going to take to our board and recommend that we use millage funds to repair that road. So it'd be at the road commission's funding, obviously the millage, everybody puts into that. Some of our projects are coming in under budget this year, which is really nice to see. We haven't seen that the last few years. We've been doing engineers' estimates, and they're coming in over the engineer estimates. This year, we're actually seeing stuff come in a little bit under engineer estimates. We saved some money on that Tomline project, so we wanted to go ahead and put that towards, um, Potter Road. So I think the board sounds like, we'll find out, I guess, tomorrow. Um, what I was going to talk a little bit about, though, is, because I know, uh, Blair wasn't available to tell about the funding. It sounded like Garfield wanted to talk a little bit about maybe if they could help out with Potter Road. One that I was thinking that might be a, a better fit, and it's actually something I'm working with Long Lake on right now, is Barney Road. So every year, we set $500,000 a year aside, and we split that up. And that's what we put in for an allocation, for all the townships. Each one breaks up, kind of, you know, per capita, how much there is for everybody to use. If everybody came to us every year with a whole bunch of projects, you, you bankrupt the road commission. So we say, we have $500,000 set aside. We split it up amongst the townships that come to us for a project. So Garfield gets allocated $56,000 a year. And then you can clear it for four years. So that's $224,000. And right now, you guys have that full bank of that. Um, if you were able, what Long Lake's looking at doing is they're going to bring $100,000 to the table. We're going to match that with $100,000 with these, out of these funds. And then we're going to try to put another $100,000 in there from the millage. So we're going to try to do $300,000 of the work on their side of Barney Road. If Garfield is able to do the same thing, we could do that whole stretch, probably get better pricing. It's not going to be a brand-new road, but we can get it in pretty good shape, we feel like. After that, we can do a chip seal on that, and we think we could probably get like a 10-year road out of it. So just kind of wanted to throw that out there. I know Potter Road kind of getting this started. I was trying to think of some options of, you know, how to do that. And this is just something that I thought of, so I wanted to bring that to the board tonight. So, um, we've got a couple of signal projects this year, too, coming up. And I think I talked enough. Of course, I'm available for questions tonight, or any time. Please feel free to, to stop in and, any questions you have in person, or email, or phone call, I'm up for any of them. So.
I have a question. Um, you're talking about Barney Road, and you're asking if Garfield Township can put money towards that. What are you looking at as far as money? The same as Long Lake, is $100,000?
That would totally be up to Garfield Township. If they wanted to do that, the more that you put in, the more of the road we could totally redo. Um, so we've actually got crews out there right now doing some surveying. We don't know exact cost that we're looking at, but off a rough guess, I think we could put something together like that. Again, we have that $224,000. If you guys came to and said you want, we want to do that whole thing towards it, we could match that and put some of our millage funds to it, and we might be able to do a pretty large stretch of that road. So.
Any other questions for Dan?
I just want to clarify a little bit about the half a million dollars that we set aside for local roads every year. We talked about it a little bit, and Dan said we have $224,000 set up for-
Al, I want to make sure you're picking up on the-
$224,000 set up for Garfield, or whatever that num- close to that number was. That's, that's really, and, and I think Commissioner McCumber, when we were talking about last month, we had some, uh, some, it wasn't clear. That's for our half of the road repairs, you know, on local roads. So when we say that we have that set aside, we have that money set aside for our half. And it's really a way to see that we don't get overwhelmed by the township, so that if all the townships come to us, we, we collectively have the money that you haven't spent, but that's for our half of the road. To fully use the $224,000 in our 50% match policy, you would put in $224,000, and we'd have a half a million dollars there, give or take. And so the, next month, we are going to meet and talk about the local road allocation a little bit, and try to tune that up a little bit. But the way the policy is, and we've had a number of townships come to us and, and use this, where they, they put in their half and they get some roads done. There are townships, um, you know, last month, we had the discussion with Blair, where they don't, they don't have money for roads, and they, they don't, they, that's not part of their plan right now. So they would not do that. So right now, we don't particularly have a very good way to use Blair's allocation. But it was really a way of our setting aside enough money for our half of local road projects, which are supposed to be 50% from the road commission and 50% for the townships. So when we say we're, we're, we've got money allocated for it, we've got our half allocated for it out of our budget, and we could do, and, and we have a substantial sum in there, right? We, and we have townships who are telling us they are not going to take advantage of this money. So we actually have more available, I would say, than, than what we actually even have allocated for Garfield deals. If you, if you have the money for your part, we, we can, we can do a lot. If, if, if the board, Garfield Board is interested, and we can do a lot of work. Would it all come this year? Been in contract, you know, how long these projects take, we're not sure. But that, that's the way our current policy reads us. We're going to, we're going to try to put some more money in there. But right now, we've got half a million dollars a year, and some of the townships are not using it. Thank you. Any questions about that?
When will you have some firm numbers on, on Barney? When will you, where we could, Chris and I could sit down, we could get an actual proposal to bring back to the board? Uh, when do you think you would have some firm numbers?
Yeah, I'm hoping to have something in under that.
Is that?
Yeah, I think that would be a good number.
30 days is, he's-
I mean, I just, just work with Chris, let's get something set up similar to what we did a couple of weeks ago. Uh-
To talk a lot of-
I think we should be sitting down on a regular basis, anyway, and talking. But, yeah, I mean, we identified at our meet, last meeting, identified three roads. It was, it was Potter was one, Barney was one, and I think Roush was the other. And a big portion of the Roush is in, in Blair again. So you probably aren't going to make much headway there this year or so, but-
Probably not. But, and if, if the Garfield Board is interested, though, but north of Potter, where, where, where Roush Road is in the township-
Right.
That, that could certainly be, you know, that could even, part of that potentially could be added this year, if you're interested, I would say. If we're going to do Potter right there, there's probably a way to connect the Roush going north, if you're interested in that, depending on how you want to allocate your funds.
Well, I guess, I would just say, work with, with manager Barshaf, get, get some numbers in a meeting, and then we'll, we'll bring something back to the board for consideration.
Yeah, okay. We're just, I, I think Dan was looking for ideas. Are you, are you, are you thinking about, we'd, we'd go along with it? You're, you're interested in this stuff. And now that we're not asking you money for Potter, perhaps the township can spend its money on some of these other roads that need some work?
Well, we know we need the roads fixed. I, I can't speak for the whole board, but I certainly think it's worth putting together and bringing back to the board, for sure.
Thank you.
To make a commitment tonight, I would, would be-
No, no, that's not, I don't think that's what we need.
But I think we could-
We don't have a final number yet, but-
For sure.
I have a question. Hi.
You have to, you have to-
Jim, if you're going to, if you are going to talk, you need to come up to microphone or, I mean, if you-
When I was on the NER Board, I'm Jim Crestenson. I live on McCray Hill Road. When I was on the NER Board, there was discussion about, um, putting a roundabout at Silver Pines and the highway, M37. And I'm not convinced that that's a good move, other than we would have had a paved road, newly paved road, if that were the case, on McCray Hill Road. But the thing is, there's an awful lot of truck traffic that comes down that hill probably doing 80 miles an hour. And I'm not sure how somebody's going to go around a roundabout with a 53-foot trailer behind them.
That's a, well, that's an MDOT issue, so I don't think we're really talking about that tonight, Jim. This is tricky.
Not a, not a problem. I just wanted to throw that out, that I thought that may not be the best choice.
All right.
Thanks for your time.
No problem. Yeah, that's, that's MDOT. All right. Chris, Township Managers' report.
All right, because Alan and Dan took my bullet point number one and explained it very well. I'm not going to-
All right.
-regret that. Um, thank you. So I attended a natural education reserve advisory committee meeting. I'd mentioned this a month ago, I think. Um, it was an organizational meeting. I talked about Medali Park and adding a, a rain garden there in kind of a stormwater area. They're going to get a permit for that. Um, the Boardman River Footbridge, which will go by the Saban Dam, is slated to be installed or delivered in the fall. And they hope to get it installed, so that way you can get from one side of the river to the next. Pretty excited about that. And then, um, really, and the only other thing that applied to Garfield was, um, there's some erosion south of the Y on the river, that they want to add a fish habitat, which basically includes logs and stuff. And they got to get Garfield Township permission to do that, from what I'm learning. So, um, that, that'll come to us down the road when they're ready to do that. Uh, completed our ARPA reporting for the year, so that's been taken care of. Worked with the treasurer, Chloe, thank you for that. And, um, the assessing department, just a quick update, you know, Polly's been with us for a couple of weeks now, seems to be blending in with staff pretty well. Um, you know, getting acclimated to our software systems and, um, trying to make that department her own. So I think things are, are going well.
Did it, is there any else, or Denise?
Question on the, um, the habit, fish habitat to help with the erosion. Should that not go to the Parks and Rec Commission first?
So my recommendation to them would be that's where that would go, not to me. They could work with the Parks Commission to sort that out.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions for Chris? All right, thank you, Chris. Supervisor's report, just a couple of points. Um, you know, a few, few meetings we've had over the last couple of weeks. BPW Finance, uh, was kind of interesting. We, uh, you know, we're going to be requesting that the county board, uh, increase the spending thresholds for the BPW Director. Uh, they're pretty outdated. It's a $5,000 spending limit. Just for example, we had a water main break on, uh, South Airport Road, and the repair was $5,500. Well, we had to get it fixed. We had to spend the money, but he didn't even have enough spending authority to fix a water main break. So, uh, we're running into some pushback from the county because they don't want to give all their departments increased spending limits. But BPW are asking them to do that. It's a, it's a different situation. So we're requesting, that request will be going to the county soon. Um, we, Chris and I both attended a, 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 an open discussion with, there was eight municipalities, plus the county leadership involved. I say leadership Nate and Chris Forsyth and, and Maxwell on the prosperity plan. And, uh, all the feedback that you all provided and other townships provided was openly discussed, um, and, uh, very good dialogue. And, uh, so there's, that project is, is being re, uh, revisited, and probably some major modifications to that plan. Um, a lot of the, the issues were in the perception and the wording. Uh, you know, there was some real, real direct assumptions made based on the wording, and they, that wasn't the apparent intent of it. So they're reworking that. I think you're going to see a, 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 a lot of revisions made before that comes back to us. So there's no, there's no deadlines, there's no timelines. There's nothing pending that we have to act on at this point. The whole thing is kind of on hold right now until they revisit and, quite frankly, rewrite that plan. Um, BPW, um, not a lot going on there. We did have the executive meeting last week at the airport. It was kind of nice to get a sneak peek at the, the developments going, the additions that are going to be going to the airport over the next couple of years. Pretty impressive and, and, uh, lot going on at the airport. And the numbers just continue to skyrocket. I think I, I don't- I think, I, don't quote me exactly, uh, but it, uh, their numbers, record numbers last year, and the first quarter of this year, they're up thirty or thirty-five percent above that again this year. So the, the numbers at the airport are just going through the roof, and Kevin Klein could give you a better number than I could, but it was pretty impressive. And I was able to attend, Chris had a full staff meeting last week, and I was able to, uh, to attend the first full staff meeting since I've been here, so, nice, Chris did a nice job, a couple of things he's really providing, our electronic versions of the handbook and the policies to, again, save trees like we're doing, make them available to the staff. Um, I think we all, most of us attended different infrastructure tours with Jennifer and the BPW. Nice to get a handle on that system, and, and so as we talk about upgrades to that. And, uh, last thing, today, we had a Metro Fire meeting, and the most exciting there, they, we, I think I mentioned at the last meeting, they invested in a, a really nice drone, a Metro Fire. Uh, they demonstrated that piece of equipment today for the Metro Board, and very impressive. I, to explain everything it can do is, is, is pretty impressive. And Chuck wanted to fly it, they, they told him no. I mean, he, he tried to grab the controls, and they just wouldn't let him do it.
It wasn't, it wasn't pretty.
So, uh, but the, the, the ability of that thing is just amazing, you know, the, the camera, the clarity, the heat seeking, the, the, the whole thing. I, I can really see that piece of equipment saving a life someday, you know, and if it does, it's worth ten times what they paid for it, so it's pretty impressive, so. Uh, maybe if you, you know, run into Tony sometime, uh, he seems to really enjoy operating it, so he'd probably love to. Yeah, well, maybe we could bring him in someday to demonstrate to the town board, because it's really is impressive, worth seeing. So, that's about all I have, so. All right, moving on to unfinished business, item seven A, consideration of contract with MDOT for traffic signal upgrades, resolution twenty-two-five dash zero-eight dash T.
So in your packet is a letter I put together just summarizing the history of, um, how we got to where we're at today. You can see that this project started roughly two years ago, conversation with then Supervisor Corn, um, assessing the board's desire to cost share with MDOT to upgrade the signals to mast arms at the thirty-one South Lowe's and Myers entrances. And, um, back then, the high end of the estimate per intersection was eighty thousand. Um, I reported at our last meeting that that cost, and those were all estimates, the cost went up to two fifty-one eight hundred. And when I was inquiring about a little bit of details in the cost, they found that they had an error in their accounting, and the actual estimate is now two hundred and sixty-one, three hundred and thirty dollars. And again, that's an estimate. So there is a potential that that cost could go up, or probably not down, but it, it could be higher than that, um, when they're all said and done. So back then, the plan was to use ARPA funds to cover that, and because of the time it's taken to actually get to install or move forward, obviously that ship has sailed, we can't use ARPA funds.
You still can't commit.
Yeah, they had to be obligated by the end of last year, under contract. So, um, at this point, you would, you utilize, um, general, uh, from a general fund, um, you know, transferred to our capital outlay, um, to cover those costs. You know, as I said the other day, you know, if you, if we don't move forward with this, they'll, um, install the box band, which is the wires, and, um, that, that won't happen until next year. Um, it won't happen this year because they've got to redo their, their bid or work with the contractor and, and change the plan. So at this point, I, I guess I'll need to know from the board which direction you want to take, um, to move forward, and that would require this, um, a motion to approve the supervisor to sign the, um, contract with MDOT, and this is something that they would install this year? Or, um, you know, take no action and tell me to work with MDOT and have in the box band, um, signals installed?
Remind us, the two intersections are the entrance of Meyer and Walgreens, and what's the other one? Where Lowe's?
And the, um, I did confirm that this is the difference for the labor and the materials between what the box band would cost MDOT and the upgrades.
Okay.
I tried to nail down, um, you know, that, that they aren't trying to get the township to pay for everything because we're upgrading, and that ain't the case. Um, the figure they gave me was like a, a two million dollar project cost, um, but I, I believe that's probably including other signals and while, not just these two. Um, so I wasn't able to get the level of detail that I wanted to, to see what it's actually costing them for these two intersections, as of today.
Yeah.
I just have a couple of comments. Um, Chris left out, I mean, he did a great job, but the hundred and sixty that we had planned to spend ARPA money on, we couldn't contract by the end of the year, so we ended up putting money towards our sheriff's contract, which freed up fund balance. So I still consider this a priority project that was approved by the board at one time to at least spend a hundred and sixty thousand on, and we committed to it. And, um, based on Chris's conversations with MDOT, they, you know, made the plans based on the fact that we were committed to it. So it's unfortunate that it's gone up in cost, but that's the point, that's the risk of, you know, deciding to do something based on an estimate. Um, so I'm still for it, I think it's more than just, um, functionality. It's our main intersection coming into Garfield Township, it's got a lot of traffic, it improves property values, it improves our community, it shows that we're investing in it. We have the fund balance, and we have the tax base to support putting quality things in our township. So that's my point of view, I've been in support of it. It's unfortunate that it's gone up in cost, but I also want to look at it as if a hundred and sixty thousand is coming from ARPA, federal funded grant money. So that's a different way to look at it as well. Um, but anyways, I feel like this will delay the project, and MDOT has said that they are going to not necessarily be interested in working on us with future projects, is what Chris had mentioned.
Like, that's a potential.
Potential, because we committed to this, and now we're going back on it, and it will delay the project another year. So I can see why they would be frustrated because we said we would do it. They built the design based on that, and now if we go back, they're going to have to start the redesign all over, is from how I understand it.
That has to get rebid.
Right, so I, that's just my two cents on it.
Anybody else have any comments about the, yeah, Molly?
So, uh, if I understand, MDOT is, is kind of saying, uh, if we don't proceed with this, we may have some issues in the future, or what are you saying here?
That is my assumption, that, that could, that's the detrimental part of not going forward, is that they could say, they could hypothetically say, well, you know, if, if you say you're going to be a partner with it and then not do it, then maybe they won't give you the opportunity to upgrade. It's just, me looking down the road, they could say that, maybe not.
Oh.
But they have not.
They didn't actually threaten.
They didn't actually say this, no.
Okay, I, see, I thought they had actually said that to you.
Nope.
Okay.
But wouldn't they understand the fact that it went up a hundred thousand dollars too? You know, we may have committed to a hundred and sixty thousand, but now it's two hundred and sixty thousand dollars. Wouldn't they consider the fact that they may say, oh, wait, they may not go for this now that it's a hundred thousand dollars more?
Yeah, and I've told them that the board may not approve it, and then have to go with the alternative. So I've kind of let them know that, and they didn't threaten anything to get us to go forward, it just, you know, it, it could happen.
That's your opinion, it could happen, but it didn't happen.
Correct, yep, and it's never been stated.
Yeah, Molly?
Um, on the maintenance of those, have we kept track of what's, what's the maintenance been on Frankie Road one, and, you know, the other ones that we have? Is, have we checked on that to see whether it really is, uh, costly and frequent and all that?
I don't recall, even as a trustee over the last five years, having to deal with that personally. Um, and as my time as a manager, I haven't had to address that.
And MDOT doesn't come and.
They do not, and they weren't able to give me, when I was assessing this initially, you know, what, what the longevity is of the paint, if they've had experience with that, what the cost is for maintenance, they couldn't give me any information.
That seems fishy. I'm sorry.
Chris, do we have a, what's their deadline on us being in or out?
Um, so it had to be thirty days from the date that I received this, which was like a week and a half ago.
So we're, we're down a couple, two, three weeks, let it, would, would we have time at our next meeting to deal with it, or does it have to be dealt with today?
Um, let me look at my email real quick.
And, and, and I guess the next question, I mean, we, we started this process quite a while ago of converting it to these green mast arms. Uh, and I'm not trying to put anybody on the spot, Chris, you in particular, but do we have a, how many, how many intersections are not done? How many more intersections have lights that are not mast arms that could come up? How, I mean, is, the, you know, are there going to be two more, five more, ten more down the road, or is, are these the last two and we're done? I mean, I, I, do we have any idea about that?
I think it should be part of the capital improving, improvement process.
Right, but my point is, 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 we've done several.
How many more do we have?
There's several, how many more, there's two here we know about, how many more aren't done? That, that may, that they may be coming back a year from now or two years from now, because obviously the cost is, because it's, I, I feel like we're at a tipping point. We either continue with this program of upgrading the mast arms, or we bail out of the program altogether and just say we're done doing mast arms. I, I don't see us opting out of these two and then coming back and doing another one later. I, I think we're, it's a, I see it as a tipping point of either getting in or out of, of upgrading. I, I think they're nice looking intersections, they do upgrade, they'd look great, but I think we're at a real critical moment here. I'd like to know how many more are, are there out there? I'm not, I don't know.
The question I would like to have answered is the same, like Molly said, what does it cost for the maintenance of these? Is it more money than it is, if, if we don't have mast arms, is it less money having that? You know, those are the things that I would like to have answered too, to find out. Is this feasible for us to go ahead and do the mast arms, but then find out down the line that it's going to cost a lot of money to maintain, have maintenance with them, or the other one's not going to?
Does the township have to maintain them, or does the state?
I think the township does.
I believe it would be us.
Township does.
Chloe?
So this is like an echo of a conversation we've had several times. So when we decided to do it the first time, we looked into maintenance, and then when we decided to paint them a couple of months ago.
In January.
We looked into maintenance, and it's, it's up to the townships to paint them. But essentially, the ones that we've had, I know John did some research on, you know, we've had them painted for ten years, and they haven't had any issues. So, um, but yeah, I, I agree with you, Joe, I think as a board, we needed to decide if we want to go down the route. Um, but you can look at it case by case and where the intersection is. Like, these are at major intersections on a busy road that's going to bring visitors into Garfield Township. So, you know, you don't have to do every intersection, but this is Meyer and in front of Lowe's. So it's very heavy traffic, seen by a lot of people, you know, driven very heavily. Um, but yeah, I agree, I think we need to decide if that's the route that we want to take or not. But I do think we committed to this, and so I would like to honor it, but we could, I guess, discuss it as a board further.
I mean, the point is, it did come to us as a, as a, um, an increase of, from one sixty to, to two, call it two sixty. What we're voting on really is the, is the hundred thousand dollar increase, because we already committed technically to the one six, one sixty, so.
But like Chloe is saying, the hundred and sixty that we had originally had from the ARPA funds, we took and used that for our law enforcement contract, so we still have that hundred and sixty thousand dollars there. So it'd actually be costing us another hundred thousand dollars.
Right.
And if we did this, would that come out of the road fund, or where would it come out of? The general fund. General fund, okay.
Be a capital improvement.
Yeah, Joe?
The only thing I would say is that there's no consideration of the fact that they're not putting up the poles and the wire box. There's a cost for that as well.
Right.
So it appears that we're paying the full charge, rather than the difference between the two.
So I confirms the difference. Um, in prior emails with them, they said it was the difference, and then I confirmed that yesterday.
Yeah, that's the same question I asked Chris to check on, is this, is the total cost, or is this just an upgrade to get to the mast arms, with the green mast arms?
The difference.
And they confirmed it was an upgrade cost, not the total cost. Yeah.
So why didn't?
Oh, Chris, Chris.
To answer your question about, um, when we need to decide this, why, I got the email on April third, and you have to do it within thirty days.
So we don't have time.
So we won't have another meeting before, so tonight, we really should decide tonight?
So I have a question, Joe.
Yeah.
And I don't know if Chris can answer this or not. So the mast arm design is two hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars. What is the back, the box band design, what's the cost of that?
So I asked for that and didn't get the details that I was looking for. I, I wanted to ask them, what is your piece of the pie here, so to speak? And that's when they gave me the, went through two people to get that information, a two million dollar total project.
I do agree with Chloe, though, I mean, they do look good. They really do, rather than the box band design.
There's no question, they, they do, it's two intersections, not one, we're talking about two intersections, so.
I, can I make a motion?
Go ahead.
I would like to make a motion that we do the mast arm designs at a cost of two hundred and sixty-one thousand, three hundred and thirty dollars.
Support on those two intersections.
On those two intersections, correct.
Um, okay, the support is where, all right. So, uh, so motion was made to, um, authorize me to sign the, the contract, so we're approving resolution, we're voting on resolution twenty-two-five dash zero-eight dash T, uh, and to upgrade the mast arms at a projected cost of two hundred and sixty-one thousand, uh, whatever the exact number was there, two sixty-one, three hundred and thirty dollars. Any further discussion on that? Yeah, Molly?
Uh, so do we have any cost to putting in the box things? Does the township pay anything for that?
No.
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 No, if we, if we voted no on this, they will proceed with the box type, and then we would be out, it wouldn't cost us anything. There would be a, an MDOT project, an MDOT upgrade to this, signaling, signaling upgrade. Chris, did you have a comment, or anything else?
So the contract you'll see references the two hundred and fifty-one thousand eight hundred original amount, so I asked them if I, they needed to provide me with an updated number and a different contract, they said no. Um, that is just, uh, an estimate. So we'll just know that the board has approved the dollar amount that you said, and if they end up saying it's more, then I'll have to come back and have a conversation.
Well, you can, can you tell?
Not to exceed.
Can Chris tell them that when he lets them know? I mean, can you put that in there, that says this is the amount that we're agreeing upon?
You can make the motion not to exceed.
Not to exceed, yeah.
Then I make a mo, can I rescind my motion?
Well, just amend your motion not to exceed.
I amend my motion not to exceed, two hundred and sixty-one thousand, three hundred and thirty-three dollars.
Three hundred and thirty dollars.
Still support it.
Still support, okay. So we have a motion to authorize the supervisor to sign the contract with MDOT not to exceed, um, that amount. Any further discussion on that motion? And we were all calling that?
Schmuckle?
Yes.
McCumber?
Yes.
Corn?
Yes.
Ellen McManus?
Yes.
Gustanelli?
Yes.
And Jay McManus?
Yes. Okay. Moving on, seven B, consideration of designating the Cherryland Center a redevelopment project area, resolution twenty-two-five dash zero-nine dash T. Chris?
Just trying to get to that. Okay, we've talked about this several times at prior meetings, about designating the Cherryland Center as a, um, redevelopment project area. And what that does, um, just as a reminder, if there is investment in that district during a three-year period of time that is greater than, um, one thousand dollars per, for every, one million dollars for every one thousand population. So our census in twenty-twenty was roughly nineteen thousand five hundred people. So there would have to be investment in the area during the three-year period of time to exceed that. Right now, the investment, um, between all of the properties in the, um, the area that's depicted on the map that's in your packet is around twenty-four million. Um, at the end of May, you'll have it significantly fall off because. At the end of May, you'll have it significantly fall off because some of that investment had occurred prior to that three-year start time. So we had asked that the owners and the businesses collaborate, come together on how they would recommend to this board that we would designate a quota licenses is which, what it would be. And I, I don't feel that we're going to get a consensus. The, I think it's Two Brothers Dog Park, that individual was here a year, a year or so ago when we awarded High Top the quota license. So he still has interest. And then Dr. Walls, who was here at our prior meeting, has interest as well. So we do have a policy that governs how we assign these. And I feel like this is a good scenario that we have the committee review their application and determine if it's not in their best interest, if it's in the best interest of the township, basically is what the policy is for. So that can, there'd be a committee that would review that and it would have to be relatively quick. The committee would then review the applications and then make a recommendation to the board at their next meeting, the first in May. And that would allow the applicant to move forward, you know, with the dollar amount of investment, you know, that's necessary. So the longer we wait, we reduce their chances of doing this. So supervisor and I were talking about creating a committee, which the policy talks about himself, the, um, the assessor, I believe the planner, and then a board of trustees member.
It's the clerk.
The clerk, sorry. The assessor, the clerk, supervisor, and a board of trustee member that he would assign to be part of that. And, you know, the only thing I would just ask is that, that's something that is done within the next couple of weeks and a recommendation ready to go at our next board meeting. They, the, um, developer, the developers or the owners are still trying to verify their investment figures with our assessor who has to complete an affidavit basically saying she supports all these numbers and they're accurate. So she is working on that currently and, you know, they, they have a deadline and they have a motivation to get this done. So we're hoping that they can all get her what she needs for that affidavit. So the plan would be next meeting, recommendation from the committee and a copy of an affidavit that supports all the investment and a resolution of which business you want to support to get the license.
Chris, go ahead, Lenny.
Don't we have to let them turn this resolution that we approve this in right away to the state before they can get this moving?
No, my, I mean, my understanding with their, in conversation with our planners, all this has to kind of go together to the state. We felt that this is something that we could take care of now, the other bits and pieces can progress forward.
Yes. It's, it, there's a few things that are a little more complicated, but one of them is you, you picked the three-year period. If, so if it's a three-year period that ended December 31st of 2024, going back three years, it doesn't change. I mean, it's your three-year period, whatever you want to choose. So there is no deadline there. But it would be, I think, beneficial to get it off the ground as soon as possible, but I don't think we have to go helter skelter. And I'd be thrilled to be appointed to that committee.
Okay. What I would like, whatever's on the committee, and I have no problem with that, I, is provide us with some information to help us make the decision. I think, you know, not tipping the scale, but who, you know, where, who's made the investment? You know, as if somebody, if there's, if there's $20 million in investment and a person that made 10 million of that wants the liquor license and somebody made 2 million of that wants liquor license, there may be a heavier weight toward the person that's invested more money, that type of thing. I think that those, that's some information you could help provide this committee to make a good, solid decision. And I, I don't have any problem with moving quickly on it, I think it's, it benefits everybody to move quickly. Chloe?
The reason for having to move quickly is because a lot of the investment's going to fall off in May.
Correct.
So if you want to explain that, Chris, that's why.
Yeah, my understanding is it's like three years back from a point in time. So the longer you wait, if you go to mid-June, then it's three years back from June. So that was our understanding and that's why the urgency is because May 31st, a, a good chunk of that investment that carries it over, that 19 million, would not be able to be counted towards the total because that would have been prior to three years. So that's just our.
Yeah, I mean, I'm in favor of passing the resolution right now, so I think we should go ahead and do that.
Molly had a question, I think.
Molly had. Well, mine was just, um, just to clarify, we have enough investment there for one.
Correct.
Liquor license and not more at this time.
Potentially more than one.
Potentially, oh, now, you're saying now there might be enough investment that they could have two? Possible.
Yeah.
We won't know until we see what the, how much the investment.
It's, it's all in, it's all in.
Well, I like the idea of doing it, so I don't have a problem with the resolution.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the resolution.
I would support it.
Okay. Motion was made and supported to approve resolution 2025 dash 09 dash T. The resolution establishing a Cherryland Center as a redevelopment project area under provisions of Michigan Liquor Control Act. And we'll get that part of it out of the way. Any further discussion on that motion or any questions about that motion? Okay, hearing done, Ian, can we have a roll on that?
Corn?
Yes.
Agustinelli?
Yes.
Uh, Schmuckel?
Yes.
Elle McManus?
Yes.
McCumber?
Yes.
Jay McManus?
Yes. And we can get together, um, is, is any, Mr. Corn has expressed interest in being on that committee along with the predetermined, anybody have any issue with that?
Nope.
I think it's my decision to, to form that committee anyways.
He's so informed on that stuff.
Well, he's got some background on it, so I, so we will add Mr. Corn to that committee and, um, do we have to vote on that? I don't think it's just my decision on the committee appointment, right? All right. Any other conversation about that topic? If not, we'll move on. All right, we're going to have a presentation on our new township website, I believe, at this time. Been working on this for a while, so.
Right, thank you. So I thought I'd start off by showing our old website, just so you can get an idea of the starting point. This is a project that's been long overdue. Basically, the main goal was to, uh, to improve the functionality and the ease of use for our users. We want them to be able to get in and access information easily and not have to do a bunch of clicking and digging around. So, um, that was our main goal. Um, so I'm going to pull up our new site here. It's quite a bit prettier, more pleasing to look at. Um, but a lot of thought went into the design and actually the components of it. So I'm just going to go over some of the highlights. This was a lot of back and forth with the company to make sure that it, you know, was functional, met our needs and that we could make sure that it addressed, you know, all of the things that we were looking for. Basically, along the top, you have our main headings, which we put a lot of thought into organizing. Any, any of this can change, by the way, too. This is just where we're at right now for launch, but, um, and then we put our five main buttons here, which was based on data from our old website. So we looked at which pages got the most clicks. And that was agendas and minutes, paying your taxes, park reservation, voting, and township's map. So we made those super visible, easy to click on, um, right on the main page. And then we just made an announcement section that's very clear, easy. We can put push out notifications, it, it can also link to your Facebook to push out announcements to Facebook. Um, and then we have our upcoming meetings on here as well. So all this, you can click on, get more information. Um, and then we just did a nice little about us section with some lovely pictures. These are all pictures that our photographer took while going around the township. And then we actually had to make this map of Garfield Township where it is specifically because there are multiple Garfield Townships in Michigan. So this identifies where we are, which county and it just.
Isn't there seven or something like that?
Yeah, six or seven.
There's six.
So we, she made that for us, so that was really nice. But just to go over a couple of the pages, um, we have an agendas and minute page that has all of our board meetings, planning commission, joint meetings. It's also searchable now, so if you want to search for a meeting, super easy to search.
Search by topic?
Um, the whole site is searchable by topic, so I'll show you that in a second. But, um, so anyways, the first one's kind of boards and commissions. We laid out all of our boards and commissions on here. Community information, a lot of this was brought over from our old website, but just updated. Parks and trails, there is, um, I'll show you some things that are there, but this is all of our parks information. And then all of our departments listed here. And then there's a frequently asked questions section, how do I contact us? The biggest feature that we didn't have before was the searchability of the whole site. So you can click the search and you can type in any topic. We're going to type, we're going to do swimming pools because that's what was recommended to me. So if a, if a resident's on here and they want to look up, what does Garfield think about swimming pools? It will bring up, oh, sorry, did I go to the wrong thing? Swimming pools, did I spell it wrong? Okay, here we go. So it'll bring up wherever a swimming pool is mentioned on our webpage. So you can click on it and it will take you to the different things, um, different places that it's on our site. We also have a new document library, which we've never had before, where you can search any document. So this is really nice, you can search for ordinances, you can search for master plan, you can search for, any document that's on our website will come right up. Like if you search for, let's just search for perks, master plan. And then it has our five-year plan on here, you can click on it, it'll open it right up for you, depending on how fast your computer is. So that's a really great feature too. And then another thing we did was under parks and trails, we have a new key, or sorry, park reservations. We have a new calendar, which we haven't had before, where residents can go on and see what's been reserved. So that's new, kind of cool new feature. And then we have another, we have a nice page that we're pretty proud of with all of our parks and trails, all listed on one page with links to all the different sites and maps and all that. There was something else. Uh, oh, I wanted to talk about how it's ADA compliant. That was a big thing that we wanted to make sure. So the company we're working with, they guarantee it's 100% ADA compliant when we get it. So they run every page through a program and make sure that it has the right contrast so that it can be read. It's supposed to be able to be read out loud, all that stuff, so that's really good too. It's also a responsive site, which we did not, was, our, our other site was not responsive, which means it's, changes shape if you're viewing it on a phone or a tablet or a computer. So if you go on a phone, it's going to look a little bit different than on a computer. It's because most people, when they're going to go to our website, they're probably going to pull it up on their phone. And before it was very tiny, it was our whole webpage, but now it's going to be a clean, easy to look at, uh, site on a phone or tablet. I don't know, is there anything else, Chris, that you, that I've missed?
No, I think you hit the high points, um, like the photos right there in the front of the main page can be changed out easily. We talked about adding drone footage, just to add some interest to it, something in the future. And it's easily customizable, we have several staff members who are trained to edit it, add information, delete information. I think one thing that I'm looking for from the board is not necessarily changing all the design because there's a lot of work put in there, but if there's information that you want added, um, just let me know as soon as you can. We're looking to go live at the end of the month, that'll be in coordination with our IT company, I'm still working with them and our current web hosting company to make that transition happen.
That's beautiful.
Yep, great job.
It really is nice and it, uh, it, I've just bopped around on it, it's very user friendly. It seemed like it was very easy to get around on and, and it's amazing how many beautiful scenes we have. The photographer did a great job, it was like, wow, there's some great looking stuff around Garfield Township, so. Uh, but it is a nice site and it's, well, long overdue to be upgraded for sure.
Thank you for everything you've done.
Yeah, it wasn't, I mean, I didn't do most of it. It was, I'd say Karen Lever and Kathleen Roone worked lots of hours on it, back and forth. We never thought it was going to be this big of an undertaking, you know? It was a lot of work, we thought we were going to pick text and fonts and some cute pictures, you know? But no, it was a lot that went into it. So I want to thank our staff and John Psych also for putting a lot of time into it. We're really proud of it, I think it's a good product, so we're good, we're happy with it. Any other questions, any feedback, like Chris said, send it to him.
Keep it moving forward.
Yeah.
Yeah, Molly, I'm sorry, go ahead.
See what the board thinks. You know, when we did our priorities, one of the things was housing in Garfield Township. And I'm wondering if we should have some place where people can see we have multifamily, we have, uh, you know, single family subdivision, we have all, all different kinds of housing.
Do we have a, I don't think, we have an economic development page, but yeah, no.
It was on the top of our priorities list of, you know.
Isn't it on the economic development page?
I know, that's what I was wondering, but I don't think that's specifically, no, opportunity zone. So like, you're thinking of a page for like our priorities, is that what you're thinking of?
It could be under planning or it could be wherever we have our, you know, what are the goals of the township.
Right.
Or maybe it's just in like some of those pictures that you click through under, uh, community information, you know?
Right. Okay, well, we can look at that, we'll probably bounce that off of John, see where the best spot would be to put something like that. Yeah.
Thanks, Chloe.
Yeah, thank you guys.
All right, moving on to new business, item A, consideration of bids for South Airport Road and Bartle Street Trail Extension Project. Okay.
Jennifer.
Okay.
Good evening, everyone, Jennifer Graham, Gordy Frazier. In your packet is a letter of recommendation along with a corresponding bid tab. If you recall, last year, it was probably earlier, 2024, um, there was definitely an interest to extend the trail essentially along South Airport near Team Bob's, across the railroad tracks and then run up Barlow and up near Glade Wood. And to extend that trail, there was, required a lot of, um, property coordination and easements, particularly along Barlow, uh, just so that we had proper setbacks, because we do, we have a lot of pedestrian foot traffic, especially along Barlow and, um, we wanted to accommodate that, but also provide that setback off the road for safety measures. So starting that process, working with the road commission, um, we had good efforts. Unfortunately, we did not get great response, actually any response, from the residential components and piece of that further to the north on Barlow. We, I worked with John, we sent out letters, we even did a couple of open houses and, uh, no one attended, pretty sad. But made a huge level of effort, but we did get, uh, response and feedback from the commercial corridor. And so moving ahead, ultimately, we just made the decision to start the process because there's still a lot of traffic even along South Airport that we see, flooring brokers, I mean, when you're driving that way, you just see a lot of people. I mean, we already have approaches there at 7-Eleven and crossings and lights. So we wanted to continue to facilitate that, provide that access to the trail. So having those easements, um, we worked with staff and just continued the design of that side, or, excuse me, of that trail. So what that's going to encompass, it's 15, about 15 linear feet, it's six-foot concrete. And so we went through the permitting and the permitting is just pending contract award. We had bid opening, actually during the time when some of us were at MTA. So Shane, uh, the design engineer for the project, the letter signed by him, he did, did the design with some oversight from me and, um, had the bid opening. We had three responsive bidders and we were actually under our original bid estimate by a little bit, so that provides us some contingency. So in that letter, you'll see all the allocation amounts and our recommendation to move ahead with AJ's. As the apparent little bidder, we've worked with them, they have the experience. And, uh, so I'm looking for consensus from this board to authorize us to pull together contracts and secure permission to award the contract to AJ's for this project. They, we gave them flexibility, so I think that's partly what was appealing with the. They, we gave them flexibility, so I think that's partly what was appealing with the project to October with this. That's kind of what we're finding is, is it used to be, you know, we had a little more finite windows and timelines, but just with how busy contractors are, giving them that flexibility, we are getting more response, and that was present by getting three bidders. So they have till October, and verbal conversations I've had with them, they're looking at probably wanting to start the project in August, late August, after, you know, we get through some of the tourism and cherry festival is their target.
Uh, AJ's, where have they done them in Garfield Township?
I, they haven't here, um, that I can think of. I'm trying to, I know they've done some work in the city, sidewalk projects, myself personally in other communities. They've done some sidewalk projects, a lot of them targeted and geared around parks. Um, but they have, you know, installed trails and both with stone, asphalt elements or concrete. And it's usually been integrated with other projects.
And where are they from?
They are, I know you're gonna ask me that, Molly. They, is it Cal- Casca?
Has the road commission used AJ's?
Do you like them?
I believe he did the uh, there's a, I wanna call it the Buffalo Ridge Trail, well, maybe that's the wrong name. Starts at the high school driveway and goes up behind the.
Well, maybe they, yeah, that might.
That was a pretty big project.
That would've been before me, yeah.
It would've been five or six years ago, and behind the Y and goes up to the Glen Eagle, what's the name of that?
Mm-hmm, Glen Eagle.
Independence Village.
Okay, all through there, so all behind all that, tied that all together. He's done shoreline work for us.
Yeah.
Right? He's done shoreline work for us.
I mean, they don't come without their challenges, Al's not, uh, the biggest struggle I have with them, um, and actually any contractor, honestly, is restoration. And so for that area, and that's part of why our scope is to provide that full-time inspection. I mean, we were um, part of, in that line item, it's not just standard roadside mix. I mean, they're providing um, sodding and actual um, you know, Kentucky bluegrass mix, cuz a lot of those areas are quite manicured, there's irrigation in there, and we wanna put back and ensure that we're having quality topsoil and restoration.
Joe? Joe?
Oh.
Yeah, go ahead. Sorry, I'm just trying to see where they're from.
Is it Cal-Casca? Okay. Honor, thank you.
And I didn't mean to say that.
Yeah, we wasn't, right.
We had worked with them before and they were excellent.
And if it's any um, consolation, so the project manager defined with this project, uh, it's Mr. Jeff Saxton, and he, I've worked with him with Elmers, um, he was at Molon and now he's there. So a lot of it, I, you know, I tend to associate it with the individuals I'm working with, not necessarily the company. And he was the estimator for the project and also gonna be the project manager. So I have past working relationships when he was with Elmers, who had done trails and sidewalk, um, just for a little bit more context.
So they are, you're assuming they're kind of local, because.
Correct, yeah.
It's kind of already worked on, okay, yeah. I like Elmers, too.
I, I, I do.
It's only a $5,000 difference, and they're kind of the local guy, but.
Well, and you guys always have, I mean, and we have that dis- qualifier on every bid that we have. I mean, if there's always a preference, um, and we do like to look at local, um, and the three bidders were within a local vicinity. Um, and I don't have any red flags to, that's, you know, when we go through this process and vetting, I don't have any, anything that comes to mind where it's glaring that we wouldn't want to consider them as a low bidder. Um, where I've had any projects in the past that have gone poorly, to not recommend them. So I don't have a reason to not use them, and I have worked with uh, that contractor before in other projects in other communities.
I'm kind of on the same wavelength as Molly. $5,000 difference, we've worked with Team Elmers before.
Yeah.
And we've had nothing but good luck with them.
Right.
I wouldn't mind going to the second highest, second lowest bidder, because of someone that we're, we're familiar with.
And if I may, um, and I just, ironic, we're, I'm working with another um, community on this, cuz we are seeing bids that are ironically very close to each other in price. And um, there's a couple other communities recently that have adopted it. It's more of an uh, internal policy, but it has to do with locality. So if they're generally um, a business within your township, I mean, there's usually, there's internal preference to that. That may be something that this board may wanna consider in the future. Um, is, and it's not a formal resolution policy, but it may be something um, internal that you guys wanna review, especially if they're within five percent price of each other or something in that regard.
Sure.
Yeah, I think another thing to consider is the year, the um, allowance for lawn restoration.
I saw that.
Thirty-one thousand for Elmers versus nineteen thousand for AJ's, and I think that would be.
Right. And that's a tough one.
Biggest problem is restoration.
And we all, and I've got gentlemen in the audience here, too. It's tough when we have bid items, because contractors just, they allocate things where they, yeah. Um, it's not a one-for-one, like a, you know, square foot of something where restoration's a lump sum. Um, so I'm sure they were either heavy and loaded it on mobilization or something else, but um, Elmers will definitely do a, a stand-up job, and um, I will obviously support any decision of this board.
Well, it's your pleasure.
Could I make a motion that we um, give the contract to Team Elmers for $236,082?
Support.
Motion made and supported to award the bid for the um, Barlow, uh, the South Airport Barlow Street Trail Extension to Team Elmers for the amount of $236,082. Uh, Jennifer, what was Team Elmers' timeline? What did they?
Same, I, yeah, I imagine it's the same. A lot of them, um, and specifically for them, they're busy with efforts on 72. Uh, it may be closer to that October timeline. Um, so if there's direction from this board that you guys are looking for more of a target, I will relay that and um, work with them to try to achieve that.
Just more curiosity on my part.
Oh, okay.
Any further discussion on that motion? Uh, hearing none, Ann, can you have a roll on that?
Schmuckel?
Yes.
Augustine Ellie?
Yes.
L McManus?
Yes.
McCumber?
Yes.
Corn?
Yes.
And Jay McManus?
Yes, okay. Thank you, Jennifer.
Well, thank you. You guys always keep me on my toes. I appreciate that.
Okay, next item, consideration of the First Amendment to the Water Supply Contract between Garfield Township and the City. It's on page forty-five of your packet. And I think this has been well discussed. Um, we, this is the official document amending the contract, moving us from five million gallons a day to six. It's been reviewed by our water attorney. Uh, and everything's ready to go. Just need your uh, approval for me to sign the contract. Yes, Molly?
Have we been able to come to some kind of resolution about how they calculate? That we've had a lot of discussion over the last six months, huh?
No.
It'll be a moot point.
It's a moot point, because we're installing uh, real-time meters. And the three, uh, three of the six are already installed, and the other three should be installed by the end of May, at the latest, probably before that. The city and the BPW are working to install those. We literally went out for bid twice, and nobody bid on the job to put in those meters. Uh, but we have the meters in, in stock and they were on hand. So three are in automatic right now, and the other three are going in soon, so the whole, the whole peaking factor calculation is now a moot point and doesn't matter, cuz we have real-time data.
Great.
So it's a, it's a, it's a great, it's a great thing all the way around, so.
So I would make a motion to approve the signing of the amendment to the water contract.
Support.
Motion made and supported to authorize the supervisor to sign the amended water contract, moving our uh, reserve capacity to six million gallons per day. Any other further discussion on that motion? Hearing none, Ann, can we have a roll on that?
Uh, Corn?
Yes.
Schmuckel?
Yes.
Augustine Ellie?
Yes.
L McManus?
Yes.
McCumber?
Yes.
Jay McManus?
Yes, all right, thank you. Uh, I think Chris is gonna take the next couple. Uh, consideration, item C, consideration of MDOT Rail Corridor Long-Term Occupancy License Agreement for Premises, uh, described in tracking number two thousand twenty-six R.
So uh, we talked about this before. We have Seward Water uh, infrastructure on Keystone Road going through the MDOT property. And um, so this is just a, an agreement for our infrastructure remain there, and they're asking us to pay, uh, I think, $625 a year for the next five years, uh, until 2030.
Go for it.
Um, and. This is something that we've had in the past, and you know, those agreements are expired now, and this is just renewing it. Um, the agreement has a little bit more words in it. Um, it was reviewed by our attorney, and um, there was no issues that they found with us moving forward with agreeing to it, and just moving forward.
Do we need a motion on that? I make a motion that we adopt Michigan Department of Transportation MDOT Rail Corridor Long-Term Occupancy Lease Agreement in the amount of $625 per year for the next five years?
Correct.
Thank you.
We just need to have Joe sign that.
Yeah, authorize it.
Authorize Joe to sign.
All drugs, me to sign.
Support.
Motion made and supported to authorize supervisor to sign the license agreement with MDOT on the rail corridor. Uh, any further discussion on that motion? Yes, Mr. Corn?
Uh, I will be voting no on this. Um, MDOT Rail is a horrific bureaucracy who did not do what they were supposed to do. And it cost us enormous amount of money, time, and trouble when Cass Road was flooding, because they did not maintain their property. A new agreement puts the maintenance on us. So that's, since they're incapable of doing things themselves, let them know where their culverts are. Again, I will vote no.
This is uh, and if I'm not mistaken, this is to, at least for our water mains that are underneath the rail?
Correct.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I don't know, I don't, I don't wanna have to move those water mains at some point in the future, so it's not, it'd be fun to do either, so.
We'd like them to shut down the railroad and make a great trail. It added, having the railroad there running one car once a week, so they could maintain an active line, um, cost us millions of dollars additional for the trailing around the lake. And they are, they're kind of a parasite. Whatever, any, anybody else.
It's in your opinion, though.
In my opinion.
All right, and you're saying your opinion.
All right. They, uh, whenever anybody wants to do anything in terms of roads, trails, anytime it gets near MDOT, it just adds an enormous amount to the cost. And it's, it's a crazy dream that they're going to have this modern rail system up here. But.
All right.
That's just my opinion.
Follow question.
Yep, all right. Any further discussion on the motion on the table? All right, uh, this is just probably a, is a, uh, just a voice man. So, okay, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Do I need a roll call now?
No.
All right, we're good.
Yeah.
All right, item D, consideration of MDOT Trail Corridor Long-Term Occupancy Lease Agreement for premises described in tracking number two thousand twenty-seven dash R. So again, this is the second one in the, of the set.
Yep, this is water main along Cass Road. Same term, cost, and length as the previous one.
So.
So I'd just like a similar motion.
Is this a different one?
It's a different location, yep.
Different location.
The other side of the river.
So we're gonna pay $625 for this location and $625 for that location?
We have, we have water mains underneath the, the rail in two different spots, so.
So on this one, do we need to put it as Cass Road one? Cuz I didn't do that in the first one, so.
Well, the first one was identified uh, by the, the tracking number twenty twenty-six dash R, this is twenty twenty-seven dash R. So just by the tracking numbers, the items are.
I make a motion that um, we adopt tracking number twenty twenty-seven, our Michigan Department of Transportation, MDOT Rail Corridor Long-Term Occupancy License Agreement.
Actually, you're authorizing me to sign.
Authorizing Joe to sign, I'm sorry.
That's right.
Support.
Motion made and supported to authorize supervisor to sign uh, the agreement with MDOT for the long-term occupancy licensing, uh, identified as twenty twenty-seven dash R. Any further discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Okay, all right. Moving on, consideration of Eagle Brownfield Site Assessment, uh, BSA Grant Application Letter from su- support to the Woodmere Crossing LLC. Chris, you have this one?
Woodmere Crossing LLC has been developing the um, Premier Place Apartments there at Woodmere and Premier. Over the course of time, I think I've laid out the history of it pretty well. Um, to the north, there was contamination, um, that was identified, uh, removed, and they wanna proceed with the final stage of the PUD, the Northwest Corner. Um, and before they do that, they want to do another assessment for um, uh, waste. And um, and they're, they can, they're trying to seek an Eagle grant to help offset the cost for the um, testing. So that's what they're asking, is that we um, give them a letter of support for that, which I've included what I would give them if you um, authorized me to do that.
All right. And is there a resolution in here, Chris, or what are you looking for, from us? Just support?
Allowing him to do it? Is just.
Is there a requested motion?
Okay.
Oh, he does?
Anybody have any questions for Chris about what we're dealing with here?
I make a motion that we authorize township manager to provide the attached Eagle Brownfield Site Assessment Grant Application Letter of Support to Woodmere Crossing LLC.
I'll second that motion.
Motion made and supported to authorize me to sign the Brownfield uh, assessment as explained in the motion. Any further discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. All right. Well, that takes us to our second public comment, so we will open public comment up again. If anybody'd like to come forward, please go to the microphone, state your name and address for the record, and let us know what you have to say. And as often the case, nobody's running up. We'll go ahead and close public comment and ask if there's any other business to come before the board this evening.
Just one thing.
Yes, Chris? I'm sorry, here, Chloe, yeah, go ahead.
It's just about Chris's review, um, the company. Sorry, Amy Sal, they have a new name now, that escapes me, but they're going to be, they got everyone's feedback. They're gonna be sending out a survey through email on the twenty-eighth, and it'll be open for two weeks for board members, staff, and actually Chris is gonna do a self-evaluation, too. And then they summarize it all, give it back to us, and then we can discuss it at a meeting where Chris can request closed session or, if you would like. Um, but that's kind of the process, so look for that to come in your email. And then when we get the results summarized, will your results be in the packet? I'm not sure that's, I haven't thought that through, but. Or is that private? I don't know.
I'm not sure.
Okay, well, we'll look into that, but anyways, it'll come to a board meeting to discuss. That's it.
Chris, you have something?
So the Personnel Committee um, is doing a wage study uh, for our staff, and it's, it's a lot of work. It's a heavy lift. We received a, a quote from Axios HR to do a wage study, roughly $6,000. And we don't know that that will be enough to cover the scope that we would need somebody to do the research. Um, we feel like that would um, not hit all the municipalities and all the jobs um, that we would need. So the cost would likely go up. Um, we, we can do the work internally. Um, again, you know, it just, we're doing our day-to-day work, and then this would be additional. We just wanted to get the board's opinion or thoughts on, is it best to go hire a company and let them do all the work? Or do you feel confident in our, us just hailing it internal?
I would say get a company, and the only reason why I'm saying that, and you're a busy man. That takes a lot, because I know we looked at it before, a long time ago on the Personnel Committee, and it took a lot. Um, I would be all for getting a company to do it.
When's the last time we did a, a comprehensive wage uh, assessment for our staff?
God, it's been about six, fifteen, sixteen years, Chuck?
From time to time, we have done an adjustment, as it were, based upon the fact that we were unable to hire at our current wages.
Okay.
That's, it's been more of a cause-and-effect kind of thing rather than a study. I've seen a lot of studies that just, the counties run a couple of them that just sat on the shelf.
I don't think it'll sit on the shelf here like it did there.
Just asking a question, so I know.
Again, the point is, I don't. Have we had anybody quit for their salary here? Well, I can't remember.
Have we had anybody quit for their salary here? Well, I can't remember.
I'm just looking at the fact of the time. It's going to cost.
Chuck, we just had one.
Our supervisor, our assessor just left.
Assessor just left.
That's, again, we, we looked at it and decided not to.
We did a discussion on that.
Raised her wage, but it was.
Chloe, did you have a comment?
Just coming from the Personnel Committee, Committee perspective, we've discussed this a lot and we actually think it's quite urgent to address wages because there are several employees. Like Chris just said, no, but there are several employees that are asking to have their wages evaluated. So.
Chris, can you get an, how quick can you get an estimate from what it would cost to have the, the scope of the study you want done? How quick, can you have a number back to us at the next meeting?
Yeah. I don't think you have time to do it yourself.
No, I don't either.
If you want it to be effective and detailed and.
Well, I think there's some credibility to having it done outside as well. So there's, you know, somebody internally is not doing it.
Exactly.
You know, uh, the, probably an external evaluation might be appropriate, so.
Is there a potential conflict of interest since Axios is, perhaps we should bid it out?
Correct. There should be multiple bids.
Okay.
Yeah, okay. I'd say we go that route. Get us an estimate and maybe get some bids on that.
Yeah, I think it's good.
Thank you for your support.
Okay.
Appreciate it.
All right. Anything else? Any other topics? I have, uh, asked, worked with Chloe. We're going to probably soon be bringing a new design of our, our flag. It's way outdated with the out, the old logo and old colors. So we'll be seeing a new flag designed soon and hopefully. Approve a new flag design and get us a, an updated, uh, flag as well for both outside and inside.
Then you have to carry it at MTA.
I know. I carried that with MTA and that was like the most dated flag I think that was out there. So we're looking forward to it. It's, it's pretty old.
It held up very well, though.
Okay.
All right. Anything else to come before the board? If not, we'll stand.